This work session continues our discussion that we started up last week. We're holding this electronically in compliance with the guidelines provided by the Iowa Public Information Board for electronic meetings due to the COVID-19 pandemic. So I will start us off, we kind of ended last time, looking for certain consensus, trying to say for staff, what general direction are they looking for? I do have, as it was requested, to find out what some of the other measures were taken by other cities, for especially the mask mandates and things, what were required. So I have three of those when you're ready to discuss that. One is Waterloo's, one is Des Moines' new one, and then I also have Johnson County's available. So I will, happy to discuss those. And in the meantime, to start off, would any council members like to begin?
Well, I think right up front, we should, we should find out if we have a consensus to push forward with a mask mandate aimed at education and compliance. Obviously, we know that there's, we're not shooting for an enforcement thing here because it's not possible to enforce. And so I guess if the council members are up for it, if we don't have consensus, then we can't do anything. So I'm going to go ahead and say that I've thought about this a ton, way, tons of hours, and talked to hundreds of people. And I'm for pushing for a mandate that's aimed at education and compliance. And I'm ready to say that. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Yep, and just for the understanding of those who are attending and for media as well, as we're talking about this, all we're looking to do is see what kind of agreement we have in general to be able to have staff create formal documents and/or resolution or whatever is required so that council can then vote on it later. So this preliminary agreement or this willingness to go forward, all this does is helps us get an idea for whether or not some action would likely receive council support later. Council members are certainly welcome and expected to keep an open mind to be able to change their mind later if they, if they so choose. But what this does right now is it gives staff direction to proceed forward with something that council can come back and vote on. So I just want to make sure the public knows and the media knows we're not actually voting on a mask mandate here. All we're doing is seeing what, what the bounds of something like that might look like and if council is willing to entertain it. So Councilmember Harding has, has expressed his, his support for having staff gin up some information. Like to hear from other council members on it.
I've, I've got some things here.
Go ahead, Dave.
If I could be next, I met with the governor on Friday. We, we talked over quite a few things about this. She hooked me up with Amanda while, and she had sent this out to all the representatives, and I got one. And several cities in Iowa have instituted mandates for citizens. To clarify, she said, no city, county, or municipality has the authority to do this. Now, the reason I'm reading this stuff, I'd like to get everyone a copy of it, and I'll drop copies of all this stuff off tomorrow at City Hall so you can have it in your packet for Friday. Because I've got quite a few things laying here, and I don't want to take up more time than I should be allotted. But she's, the governor during her public health emergency, she attached two letters from the AG, and they tell about these things, that municipalities require masks and impose a penalty. The question is, can municipalities, cities, counties, et cetera, require masks and impose a penalty for non-compliance? No, they can't. And that came from Tom Miller. And I'll have all this stuff for all the council people to read. So it takes a little while to go over it. But the thing about it is, what the municipality can do is require masks on their own property, which we've done through the mayor and others, and in any public building or the public library and all those kinds of things. Now, the thing, when we had talked last time, we had talked about having education, and that was actually kind of an important thing. So she, in her current crop proclamation, she strongly encourages to wear a mask when social distancing is not possible. So what she has come out with now is she actually has come up with an educational, educational thing to follow, and it's called, her launch is going to be called Mask Up Iowa. And it's going to be an educational thing, which I think is kind of what we're looking for. And that's got a whole website and everything else. And when I dropped this off to all the council people, if we were meeting in person, I would have just handed you one. But I've got all this stuff from the governor's office, and I think that's the kind of the way we should go, is follow along with her. And we should have those things in place where we can educate people, not do a mandate and get in trouble, but follow with her guidelines. And her last current one kind of helped with the College Hill area, where she shut down the bars up there, which I was not in favor of. But needless to say, that's what she's done. So these are things I've got, and I want to get those out to the council people. I just got most of them today, this morning, because I talked to her late on Friday. So that's what I've got, but it's not legal for us to pass a mandate. And if we kind of go along with her and educate and those kind of things, I think that'd be great. That's all I've got.
Right, and I, I just looked up the date for Step Up, Mask Up Iowa. That's what it's called. That's a provision for a new outreach campaign encourages Iowans to follow important health mitigation measures such as wearing a cloth face mask when in public. That was released or launched on July 23rd. So we're looking at a little over a month that that has already been in place, and we're still seeing the, the numbers that, and trends that we are. So I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't, it didn't come across that this was just launched yesterday.
Also, a quick question. What the governor seems to be aiming at is that we can pass an ordinance, which is different than a mandate. Because an ordinance would mean that you could enforce it. And if there's going to be this state-local clash, and we've already decided that, we, we, it doesn't seem like we're moving towards an ordinance at this point in time. So therefore, if we passed a mandate, a mandate would essentially be aimed at education and compliance anyway, correct?
It's, are you asking me?
I'm just asking anybody. I mean, I'm just being that.
The thing that was said, that was like one of the very first questions that was asked, is that no one has the authority, no city has the authority to do this. The ones, she had, she had mentioned musketeen and a few others. And I said, no, I actually want something from your office that says we can't do this. So I've got it in my paperwork, and I'll drop this off to Kevin, because I'm sure he's the one that's going to want to look at it.
But I have all this stuff. I think I mentioned in the last meeting, I, I spoke with Governor Reynolds the Thursday before she had to issue the newest proclamation because the July 23rd one was going to expire. And I asked her to specifically note in the next proclamation that cities are not authorized to issue mask mandates. I've spoken with the city attorney about it. I've spoken with the League of Cities Attorney. All are in agreement that cities have the authority to create rules and regulations that are stricter than state mandates. We simply can't go more lax than what the state requires. So I was really hoping that when I saw the governor's latest proclamation, it mentioned masks, but all it still said was suggesting that, that, or strongly recommending that people wear them. What we're looking to do, what other cities are looking to do and have done, are create a stricter restriction. And Mr. Rogers, can, can you just confirm that that's the interpretation that we're, we're following? Or that's, or can you say what you can about it?
I can confirm that some cities have taken that position, that there, the, the basic concept here is preemption by state action. And as you correctly stated, the governor's last, most recent proclamation strongly encourages the use of face masks when social distancing is not possible. So this is the first time that the governor has specifically mentioned the wearing of face masks in a proclamation. And so some would argue, and apparently according to Councilmember Sires, the governor still strongly believes that localities do not have the legal authority to issue mandates when it comes to face mask wearing. There are a couple of concepts not addressed in the latest proclamation or any analysis, by the way, in any previous attorney general informal opinions. And that is the idea of whether or not a face mask requirement is irreconcilable with a strong encouragement of face mask wearing. That's question number one under preemption. Question number two is, as you've stated, under preemption, may a, a local government impose regulations that are more strict than the state has chosen to impose thus far? And that question's unresolved as well. So we're still in an area where there's disagreement about the authority of localities to act. I know, for instance, take plastic bag restrictions. The legislature specifically acted to say municipalities, you can't pass ordinances outlawing the use of plastic bags. Legislature came out and explicitly stated that clearly then localities may not legislate in that area. In regard to face mask mandates, and I'm, I'm back to mandates now, requirements, I still think that's unresolved. There's been no court challenges or decisions that I'm aware of so far, nor to my understanding, any enforcement action by the governor's office or the attorney general against localities that have adopted mandates. But to Councilmember Harding's point, a resolution which does not have a penalty associated with it for non-compliance is a little different.
My humble thoughts on this is, I think we're, all of us, to some degree or another, are on the same page. To me, it's a matter of semantics. What do we call it? It really doesn't matter to me. What I want us to do is to strongly encourage our residents to be responsible to each other, and then give them some tools to use. You know, put, put together some sort of flyer that we give to every business and every individual and say, if you really care about your community, these are the things we ask you to do. We can't enforce it. But I think if we appeal, and I think the governor kind of helped us out by closing the bars. It seems to me, if there's not a problem, why did she close the bar? So there is some sort of problem out there. But if, if we can start with our own residents, let them know we really are concerned about their well-being. We strongly urge people to do what A, B, C, and D are. Then the interim, before she opens the bars again, maybe work more closely with the bar owners, especially on the hill, than any other bar owners downtown or wherever they are to, let's be more purposeful about this. Let's not have sale, let's not, let's not promote that the first hundred people in here get a, you know, the dollar for a free beer, get it for a beer. And I mean, that's just, that's the opposite of what we want. So to me, this, we can call it whatever we want, but let's tell the public we care about their safety, and we, here are the things that we think you can do to keep yourself safe. And when it comes time to open the bars, we can probably open them more safely as well and get on with it. And it's not going to be perfect, but I think we can agree on maybe what those talking points might be. Because I know we, I don't want to spend another month talking about it. Hopefully, we can resolve something by the next council meeting. But that's, that's my two cents. I think it's semantics, and let's just say, what is it we want to have done, recognizing we can't mandate people to do something they don't want to?
Real quick.
I like what Frank said.
Real quick to what Frank said about the bars on College Hill. Just so you know, Frank, they're under strict numbers to only let, I talked to a couple bar owners, and one of the reasons why we saw the line like it was, was because they're, they, to social distance, they could only have about 25% capacity. So they were already at 25% capacity, and that's why the line was that long. And that's happening at bars because they had the, you have to maintain six feet apart. So they were putting tables apart, they were letting, and the bar owners I talked to, they were taking it very seriously. And so if we were already socially distanced and now they're closed down, and I, I just wanted to throw that out there, that they weren't just letting people in, you know, packing them out for a dollar a beer. That, that wasn't, to my, best of my knowledge, nothing like that was happening, especially on the hill. And I do think it does get down to semantics, you know, whether we can or can't mandate or, or what we do. So people are going to be upset either way. I understand that. It's become political, unfortunately. The way I'm looking at it is this, we, we know we can't enforce anything. So if we make a mandate that's aimed at education and compliance, then maybe it'll get more people to do it. The word is a strong word, but that's what the county, and that's what the CDC is saying, use a strong word, let's not use recommends, let's mandate and educate. A mandate aimed at educate. Yeah, and you know, we're at a point now where Iowa's number one, we're trending not in the positive. If we continue to not mandate or not try anything, and we just sit here and we don't do anything, then things may get better, they may get worse. But let's say we put a mandate aimed at education and compliance in, and it helps us out. Then we have the potential to get the businesses running fast. We have the potential to get people back out there faster. We have the potential to, to save lives. And we, like I said, we know we're at a point right now, enforcement is off the table. We know that. So mandate to educate. I mean, we, we could use strong words, and we could get people that are on the fence to go that way, and we could get through this and open up quicker.
It'd be nice to get people on the other side of the fence also to see it.
Well, it's split 50/50, it's split 50/50, so.
I know, I know.
Let's highly recommend like what the governor says. Let's highly recommend it, and then see what we can do and educate. And I'll do a video on the wearing of a mask. I wear one when I need to. I, I'm not an anti-mask wearer, you know, I wear one. I don't wear it all the time, but I wear it where I'm needed to, and I'm fine with that. But just, I'm always so worried about, we're a republic, not a, really a democracy. We're a republic where we have individual rights. And that's, that's where it just borderlines for me. If we just say we strongly recommend like she does, and then we work towards that and educate and give out free masks and do all those kinds of things, I think that'd be great. You know, even if you gave out masks on College Hill or wherever they were congregating, I'm good with that. I think we should just strongly recommend, highly recommend.
Okay, so.
You look like you want to talk, go ahead.
Okay, so can I just, I mean this with all due respect, but what the governor's done really hasn't got us in a great place. So I agree that we need to use the word mandate. I agree that we need to focus on educating. I agree that we need to do something sooner than later. And even waiting until the next council meeting is concerning. I would like to make sure we all recognize that those bars that we're doing the right thing now are being punished for the folks that weren't doing the right thing. So I think that's very unfortunate. I feel like when we focus on educating, we need to focus on many things. First, I'm okay with like, if, if we need to hand out masks to people that don't have them, if that makes somebody wear a mask, I, I'm all for that. I feel like this virus isn't very humanized for a lot of people. Some of us, we've been around it, and we've worked directly with people with COVID-19. For some reason, a lot of people feel like, just because people have a pre-existing condition, their life matters less than others, and I can't tell you how much that upsets me. All lives matter. And so we need to step up. Going by what our leaders should have done on a national level and on a state level, it doesn't work for me. We as a city council need to step up. People are going to be mad no matter what and get this under control. And the other thing we need to educate businesses on is, for some reason, they think that they're not going to have any customers. I think that's crazy. I think I said it last week, and I'll say it again. I hadn't been out to a restaurant to eat in a restaurant until a week ago yesterday. I went to our sister city. I wore a mask in, I sat down, I took my mask off, I ate, I drank, I had a great time. I put my mask on to go to the bathroom. I gave my money, and it was a good chunk of change. So the fact that everybody thinks that, that they're going to lose all kinds of business, unfortunately, you're losing business now. You're isolating people, and this has become a political thing. It's very unfortunate that we're in a health crisis, and it has to be a political thing. The other thing is, we need to make sure that we are deciding where we as a city are going to get our information from. I vote the Center of Disease Control and our Department of Public Health. And then, sorry, this just gets me so fired up, especially, it, it's not humanized for a lot of folks, and I just feel like it's very upsetting. I had many calls this week as well, you know, and it, but like, kind people, either way. But one was of a person, you know, we feel like, I feel like we forget like some folks, and we lessen their life, but we have people who were isolated for their family for months. And, you know, they, they survived, and now they're back out in the world. And it's like, I can't imagine telling a ninety-some-year-old person who wears a mask, no, I won't wear a mask for you. Like, what is wrong with you? Wear a mask. It's, it's, it's a cloth. I wear it nine hours a day. It's really not that bad. But I'm sorry, it just, I am, I feel like we've really got to move. I mean, we're in this position now, we, we, it's been almost, what, a week and a half since we first brought this up. I know it's polarizing, but we have to either, you know, make a move, whatever it is.
Thank you, Kelly. Hearing from other council members.
I think we, the time's now, we got to do something. And I've been back and forth fifty times, just the same as everybody else on this. The only way to try and do anything at this point is to put some type of a mask mandate in place. And it doesn't have to be as soon as you walk out your back door. You have to put a mask on for the remainder of the day. When you're in a public place with somebody else, and you can't social distance, you got to wear the mask. And keep it as simple as that. When you're outdoor, you don't need to wear the mask if you can social distance. And keep it as, as simple as we can. But at the same time, I, I would almost say go farther with it, you know? We're seeing what the strong recommendation to the public does right now. And it's not, it's not enough.
Yeah, and look at the, the numbers that we have now. And this is after, you know, basically just trusting Iowans to do the right thing. That's, it's a great sentiment, but we, as a result of that, have the highest COVID risk in the nation for COVID spread. So I, I'm of the mind, whether it's, it's a mandate or, or whatever actions we take that council decides on, what we're doing isn't enough. I mean, that's just obvious to me.
Well, and I think we, we got to reinforce to business owners, you know, it, to Kelly's point, it's, I understand that side of it, where everybody's taken such a beating since this happened, you know, with businesses being closed at 50% or whatever. But my intent in wanting to push something like this through is, let's get back to normal as quick as we can, whatever that's going to look like. We have to try something, and we're not getting great advice from leadership above us or whatnot. And again, it's, it's pretty clear that the good Iowan thing, it, it, it isn't working as well as we need it to. We don't have all the answers. We don't know how this is going to shape up. You know, I read a post on Facebook from a guy the other day who's got a forty-three-year-old sister that's got COVID, fighting for her life, otherwise healthy. And I, I, to Kelly's point there as well, my daughter's got this. And it's real easy to brush it off that everybody's going to recover and everybody's going to be fine. And until they're not, until you lose a husband, a wife, a sister, a son or a daughter because of any number of things, it's easy to think that it doesn't matter, and I don't have to try and help, but.
And especially when it was preventable.
Yeah, and I mean, I, we don't have near enough information about this to know what it is, what it isn't, and what the long-term effects are. We just don't know. And I feel like we got to try something. And the strong recommendation is, is just not doing it.
The other thing, when we talk about freedom, because I hear that a lot, who's not for freedom of rights? But what about the people who have, you know, I think we forget the essential worker a lot. And I've said it before, I'm lucky to work in a place where my company has stepped up and said, everybody that comes in our building is going to wear a mask. Obviously, I would hope any healthcare facility would do that. But surprisingly, they don't. But then you think about, like, when I go into the gro, the grocery store or I go into the gas station, and, you know, those folks come to work every day, and they wear their mask, but then all the people that filter through that don't wear a mask in return, it's, you know, it's, it's catching your spit. So the mask, because everybody says, well, masks don't work, you still suck in stuff through the mask. Well, that's true. That's why we both have to wear the mask. And that's, we just have to have education. We don't, nobody wants to fight with anybody, nobody wants to run anybody down, nobody wants to further a division. But we need to step up as a city and lead where we're not being led.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember, go ahead.
Thank you. Listening to all this, I think of my travels or months, years, weeks in the last few days. I've traveled through about seven states in the last couple of weeks. And I look at the map, the, the county map, Mr. Mayor, that you put up with the various counts across the nation. And I did a little research, and there are sixteen states that don't have a mandate right now. And looking at the, the US map with the spread of the, the virus incidence, I don't see any way I can look at the map and determine the sixteen states that don't have a mandate. I would assume that they would be bright red glowing with a problem. And the states that have the mandates, for example, California has one since June, and they have fines that they don't enforce and so on, that I can't find the evidence that the mask mandates in other states have been effective. Because looking at your, your US map, it looks like you take a salt shaker and sprinkle across the map, and you have a, a spattering of red counties. So.
I would disagree with that.
Well, I, I'm speaking, and I, I look at the map, and I, I couldn't find boundaries of states that don't have a mandate that they're bright red. And the other point of this is too, that many people recover, and they have the antibodies, they don't need a mask, do they? How do we, what do we say to them? So.
There's multiple strains, that's all we say.
Well, I know. Careful of pseudoscience here.
So the evidence isn't, isn't apparent that, that the masks are, are super effective. I'm, I'm in favor of education, I'm in favor of strongly recommending wearing a mask. You know, so I'm just saying what I observe and what I see. And, and I'm in states that have strong mandates or stated mandates, and I see seventy percent of the population wearing masks and thirty percent that don't. So it's just telling you what I observe and what I see, so.
All right, thank you.
I mean, some of what Daryl says makes sense, that not everybody's going to wear them and stuff like that. But, and I don't, I don't know that it goes to the fact that we know that masks are going to change it. That, that's not why we're doing this mandate. We're just, we're trying something to help the Cedar Valley to recover faster and to live. I mean, if eight weeks from now, the CDC and Johns Hopkins and Mayo and everybody says, oh, masks were a waste of time, then we remove the mask mandate. And also, I would put a date on there, I would recommend that, for when we have to reapprove it. But it, we, the worst thing we come to the conclusion of is that there's no masks and, and they don't work, then, then we move on to the next thing. I think the, the point is that, is that we're trying something. If we don't try anything, then someone's brother's going to die. Someone's father's going to die, and it could be ours. And you know what? That's the thing that pushed me over the edge. It's like, let's just try something. Let's get these businesses back up and running. Let's get these people's lives saved if we can. If I have the potential to save a life, then I want to go to bed at night knowing that I took that chance, especially when it doesn't really hurt anybody to try. Again, it's not enforceable, it's aimed anybody to try. Again, it's not enforceable. It's aimed at, it's a mandate aimed at education and compliance. So anyway, you know,
I second that. I I I think we need to vote on, let's do something. And Simon just kind of defined it. Let's start talking about what should be in that plan. What are the timelines? What are the kind of interventions we wanna do? How do we communicate? How do we educate? But I I second that motion and I'd like to determine.
Yeah.
But I I do see.
Well, I I still, I, how how do we decide what, that we're gonna stop talking about it and start putting some things down?
Well, we got it. We've got a consensus, it looks like, seeing seeing four council members that are interested in proceeding forward with defining what what a regulation or a mandate or requirement would look like.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I think I heard Dave say he he had some ideas that he was okay putting in there too. I don't, you know, there's some, doesn't mean just because you don't support that whole idea, doesn't mean there's some ideas that they might not be able to add to it, right?
Oh, I would, I I'm I'm good with the recommendations and trying to do stuff. The the difference is, is when you start to get into somebody's business and where they pay their taxes, I don't think any of this should apply in there, into your own business. You you guys are, uh, that's the one question I have is, is this just out in the public? Or does this also go into their business? See what I mean? There there's, I, that's why I like to strongly recommend and and that's what we talked about at first. Once you talk about mandate, the governor was given explicit powers uh, under this emergency and she hasn't doled those out onto us yet. And 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 she had said she's keeping those uh, powers that she has and we don't have them to mandate yet.
I I have a question for Dave. I totally understand where you're coming from because you told me something that was, that really, you know, made me think that you're for rights and I respect that. You say, if people wanna make you wear a mask, well, I don't wanna make people wear a mask, but if people wanted to make you not wear a mask, you'd be able to not make them wear a mask too. So I see where you're coming from. But my question is this real quick. If if the governor mandates it and makes it, i- is it then acceptable? Because then she'd be doing the same thing as us and why not now then? Because if she comes and mandates it, then what's the difference? Then she's gonna make the businesses do it. Why is, you know, why can't we, we try to take a step and make it work before she gets there? She's gonna, she's gonna get there.
Yeah, do it preemptively.
Because I wouldn't be for that either, Simon. Just like I told you, if the side that didn't wanna wear the masks wanted us to vote and say, no one can wear a mask, I wouldn't be for that. And then that's explained to Simon when we were talking one time. I I'm for individual rights and the the it's kind of a strange thing because I want everybody to be healthy. That's not my deal. I I I I want people to be healthy and when they need to wear a mask, I want them to wear a mask. That's fine. But I just, I I don't wanna make it a law because then then what you've done is taking the majority, uh, even if it's fifty plus one, you know, fifty percent plus one, and then you're not thinking about what the minority wants. And that's where I start to have my issue because we're a republic, not a democracy so much. That that's my big thing. That that's all.
And so I interject real quick on here, uh, just to answer Dave's question. As I look at some of the other cities, uh, and areas proclamations they've done, nearly all of them are the same language. I think they just found one that worked and and copy pasted uh, with some tiny changes, but one from uh, that was just approved what last week in Des Moines says, uh, no organization that is a public accommodation of any sort, including without limitation of business that is open to the public, may provide service to a customer or allow a customer to enter its premises unless the customer is wearing a face mask as required by this proclamation. And such organizations must post signs at entrances instructing customers of their legal obligation to wear a face covering while inside pursuant to this proclamation. So it is businesses as well. Anything that's a public accommodation. At least in theirs. We don't have to follow that, but that's what I'm seeing across the board for these other proclamations.
And we're not discussing penalties.
Correct.
For some. I don't know how you, how you do it any other way than asking businesses to be a part of this because that is the public space that we're talking about, you know, and to sit to that same point, I don't know where the budget comes from, but I hope we can find some money to offer masks, whether that's at the fire station, whether that's at City Hall, wherever that may be, and also have some type of a printable sign for businesses to put up. That all read the same. We we require masks in our in our facility. Make it as easy as possible for people to comply.
And it's it's the idea of setting standards. So even if we don't have police officers enforcing this or we don't have a mechanism to enforce it, if you think of um, speed limits, even if there's no police officers out enforcing it, speed limits should still exist. And it's, there's uh, something to be said for having others around you driving a certain speed because they know the speed limit's fifty-five. You're gonna have some people going a little over, but there is a um, a psychological group um, control or group uh, influence to cause other people to change their behavior. So if at Hy-Vee in in Waterloo, uh, people coming in are required to wear masks and there's a sign that says required, some may walk away, some may go in and not wear a mask. And I don't know if Hy-Vee would would turn them away or call or they just let them in. But it's a very different field than Cedar Falls where it's just, you're welcome to wear a mask. We encourage it. Here's one at the door. But there's no, there's no sense that it's it's necessary.
Well, yeah, and that's kind of another thing I was thinking about as well as wh- what what the mayor was saying is that it's a different atmosphere and, you know, I don't wanna see us become the next spot where we're completely closed down and shut down. And my kids are back out of school and all the businesses are closed and all the doors are closed for six weeks or eight weeks and then people are not making any money at all. I don't want us to get to that point. And there's a chance that if we don't try something, that we will get to that point. So if we try, if we try this, then there's a chance that we won't get to that point and people will stay open. And so to me, it goes back to, let's try something. Let's just not sit here and do nothing. Let's try something to keep these businesses open to make and it save lives, you know, why not? Obviously, we gave it the chance without it and it's, it's not getting better.
Would there be a consensus to have that be expiring at the same time as the um, bar restrictions at September twentieth? Is when the governor's proclamation stops on bars. Would you wanna see something similar to that where it ends at the same time and we reevaluate?
Can we um, maybe think about, remember when Dr. Nafisa talked and she said about like the five percent threshold? You know, I think she said that was a CDC recommendation. Like when when the uh, infection rate went down to five percent, then to reevaluate. But also, to that point, we need to remember that the incubation period is two to fourteen days. So just because the numbers go down, we need to remember, we need to have the conversation about, it's kind of like when you put somebody on blood pressure meds and their blood pressure gets better and they're like, oh, I don't need to take the medication anymore. Well, no, it's probably because the medication's keeping your blood pressure the way it is. So we just need to make sure we're having that science conversation. You know, when we get the, however we decide, when we get to the conversation, we need to make sure we're taking that into account.
Oh, actually, from Daryl.
Um, I'd like to ask then, in the statistics for the county, do we know what city are having these uh, uh, infections take place? Because if we uh, are perfect and every citizen in Cedar Falls has a mask on all the time, but the cases are taking place in Waterloo or Voorhees or La Porte City and our county numbers don't go down, we still have to wear masks. I mean, it's important to determine where they're taking place. For example, the the uh, we talk about the bars in the hill, if they were social distancing inside, but then they had a line out front that they were nowhere near six feet apart. Is it the fact they didn't wear a mask or was it the fact that the people in line were six inches apart? And yeah, you got, you gotta look at the statistics and, oh, you use statistics to make decisions because if uh, Voorhees is the city that has all the uh, uh, new cases wearing masks to Cedar Falls doesn't make a difference. So where, do we know where in the county the cases are, Mr. Mayor?
The, yeah, the county can break out the information and does by um, zip code. So in some places, uh, like say for Waterloo, you can get pretty specific by zip code. Cedar Falls, it would just be all of the city. But that's obtainable.
I understand, but did, do we have those, as you mentioned earlier, that we have a a big increase? And in the county, but does Cedar Falls have a big increase?
Yeah, so that's, that's information I can pull. I don't have that available offhand.
Okay, I I would be important to see that as we go through this process.
Um, back to the mayor's point, I I'd like to see those numbers too, uh, just out of curiosity. But uh, back to the mayor's point, I think it should be possibly a little longer than September twentieth to reevaluate because that would be, uh, I'm looking at my calendar and that would be sorry, I'm pulling it up, date wise for council meetings. That wouldn't, oh, that would be Sunday. So we could evaluate it at the next meeting, but I I don't know. I guess it depends. Maybe monthly, we, would we evaluate it once a month? I would probably say we should talk about it once a month or at the first council meeting of the month, every month and see if uh, if we, you know, need to do, to to adjust anything. Also, possibly putting an expiration date on it of, you know, uh, ninety days, it expires. So we actually have to vote on it again in ninety days or something so that people who are gonna be like, well, it's gonna be permanent forever. We should, we we need to vote on it. I don't know if that's something that people are up for, but we could adjust it and talk about it once a month, put an expiration date on it. I just think it should be a little longer than September twentieth, that's all.
I agree. I think you either gotta go four weeks or six weeks. And then, you know, what do you do on on the education and compliance side? I mean, are we posting? I think somebody brought it up. Are we doing videos? Are we, are we gonna put something on Channel fifteen? Or do we have something at the entrance to the city that we require masks? Do, how far does that go?
That's a good question. I don't know about uh, city signs, you know, have a city sign at the entrances of the city. It certainly is possible. I've asked, I I don't know if anybody else has seen that in other cities. I've not. But uh, things like that are possible and if we have the funding for it, um, we could dedicate some funds to do it and um, the the meetings, I I like the idea of what Simon was saying. It'd certainly be easy enough to do uh, the first meeting of the month that we have uh, to get an update on it and to see if any uh, uh, changes are are needed, sort of like a permanent referral option to see if we should modify. Um, and then, yeah, if if then it's six, four to six weeks. Uh, it seems like uh, for other, like Waterloo was six weeks. I think uh, Des Moines is just indefinite. It's whenever their mayor decides that he wants to not have it anymore, uh, that there's no more emergency. And then Johnson County's, it says, this ordinance will, this is an ordinance that will expire when the governor's proclamation of emergency expires or the Board of Supervisors declares that their public health disaster expires, whichever date is later. So there are sunsets on these things, um, and I'd leave it up to council to to offer uh, the ideas for for when that proper sunset would be then. So here in six weeks, uh, four weeks. Uh, Simon said ninety days. Is that right?
Yeah, that was just, you know, I don't know if that's, if that's too long or what. That's what I did say. Um, maybe uh, six weeks is fine with me if we wanna si- look at it. I I was just trying to look at council dates for uh, for meetings. Six weeks would put us one, two, three, four, five, six. That would put us we should probably do seven weeks because that would put us on Tuesday, the twentieth. We could talk about it uh, on the meeting on October nineteenth. If we decide to pass something or if it goes, you know, obviously, this is assuming that we we actually put something into place. So six weeks, eight weeks. I just don't want us to get caught in a position where it's it's gonna expire in between. I guess we could talk about it the long time before it or whatever.
But wouldn't this expiration be dependent on the data?
Yes.
I mean, if it's still rampant, we're, you know, I mean, to me, putting just review days and then when it reaches a certain point and maintains that for a certain period of time, then we, then we're done. And not not put it, not put an end date on it, but monitor it, looking at specific data, whatever that is. And I think we should use, work with the county. They've got all kinds of information. They got expertise. They could do. Let's not reinvent the wheel. And it is, the only other thing about this whole thing that just frustrates me is that I get, we all have rights and we live in a community and we live in a free world and we should be able to ex- experience our rights. But part of being a community member too, and I'm guessing nobody that I want to hear this is listening, but you also have responsibility. I think each of us needs to take personal responsibility for everybody else in our community. I mean, not to take them food every day or do their laundry or mow their lawn, but make sure we don't put them in harm's way. And that's all, that's all I think we're trying to do, is to look at what we think are the best ways to keep our community safe without putting our businesses out of business. It's not rocket science. I mean, there's no good answer, but the the purpose is simple, you know, and there, you know. So I I say we start looking at what what are the elements of it that we want in the program? What's the data we're gonna use to determine it and get it ready to vote on as soon as we can.
Okay, so I think the plan within Monday or Tuesday night meeting, have something ready for council to approve.
And I think, and it should be malleable. It should be flexible, something that, if something comes up or there's a miracle cure or whatever, then we can uh, deal with it. But I, and I'm not sure way to, you know, that we shouldn't talk about it every meeting, you know, how how's it going, you know? Or honor some, you know, I'm not beyond pointing out a business that's gone over and above, you know, setting a really good example for other businesses. That it's a lot about, to me, the responsibility of our business owners and they can either say, I don't wanna do this and I don't believe in it or I care about my community and I'm gonna support what we're doing. And so I I I think an ongoing discussion. Now, not vote on it Monday and wait six weeks to find out how's it going. But regularly look for data points that we wanna talk about or positive stories that we wanna share. So it becomes more of a part of our daily conversation, not just mad at each other, but look, we're making progress.
That's the hard part with it. I think there's gonna be a certain element of the public policing the public and I don't think that's gonna be fantastic. But at the same time, I, you guys have heard from the same business owners that are contacting me saying, please put this in place so I have some backup when I ask people to wear their masks in my facility, in my store, so.
Yeah, I think that's, that's gonna be huge for for just social civility and comedy is to say, not comedy, but C O M I P Y. To say, there may be people who aren't wearing a mask right now. It it's perhaps it's because of um, anxiety or or maybe there's, I had a story of somebody who went into a store from out of town. Uh, came in to get some food and was leaving and a reg- a normal, a regular of that store came in and berated that person and said, you're the reason why we are suffering. And this poor lady, it was from out of town. She didn't realize it was Waterloo. She didn't realize they had a mask mandate and totally ruined her experience and terrified her. Uh, and we have to be very careful that our residents, um, it's it's already happening, but we've gotta be careful on that shaming aspect for not uh, singling people out. And it's not just the case of this. There's other, you know, as a society, we we tend to shame people without knowing their stories. And so that humanizing of what's going on goes both ways about, you know, why people should wear masks but also understanding, not to, not to spotlight them if they don't want it, but to highlight the fact that there are people who uh, you you don't jump down their throats because they're not doing it. There could be a very valid reason.
Um, I I'd like to circle around and and just bring this up as far as like, we're looking at what we wanna put in this and what we wanna do. Does it not make sense for us in some way just to kind of uh, you utilize a similar or the same mandate that Waterloo has? Um, just due to the fact that you're on university, you're in Cedar Falls, you're on university, you're in Waterloo, you're on Ridgeway, you know, you know, the city is is right up against each other. So we don't wanna confuse people that are going back and forth. That's something to think about. I mean, I work in Waterloo. I That's something to think about. I mean, I work in Waterloo. I travel back and forth regularly. I don't want to be like, wait, which city am I in? Which mandate do I have to follow, you know, follow, or should I follow to be responsible? Cause obviously there's also states in section six that it's aimed at compliance and education. So my vote would be that we put in place something very similar. It doesn't have to be the exact same wording, but something that is, you know, similar to Waterloo so that people aren't, aren't confused, you know, it, it just, it, it makes us a stronger community.
Well, that and I'll, I'll chime in that, uh, Des Moines, as I said before, it's, theirs is nearly identical as well. The language is, is almost exactly the same. So we'd be following along with other cities as well. And so if somebody comes into a city, more than likely they're going to have the exact same rules.
Mayor, mayor, you mentioned you had talked to someone from the league of cities. Are they providing any guidance to communities?
Not that I've seen specifically. They, I asked for an, uh, or for an opinion or ask them to give me a, a, a sense of their, their take on, on home rule. Aside from that, I've not seen anything extra, like a template for these things.
So another thing that I keep wondering about is downtown. And I've had this conversation just briefly with Ron and with several business owners downtown. And I'm wondering as part of this is if we, we don't have a serious conversation about potentially shutting down Main Street and trying to help our business owners down there, social distance out in the parcade. I think it would be super beneficial to restaurant owners and there's a lot of little quirks to this, right? Tables have to be purchased. They have to completely shift how they, you know, the area that they monitor. Is there a way that we can offer some grant funding to business owners to buy additional tables or to Community Main Street? To buy a standard table and distribute those accordingly. And if we need to adjust an ordinance for their liquor licenses, I think it, I think we should be looking at it. And we're getting into the season again, but.
Mark, are you referring to having the street closed for car traffic and then put tables for dining in the street? Is that what you're? I'd be totally in favor of that.
Well, and not just.
Communities that do that across the country, uh, resort areas predominantly, but uh, that'd be a nice novelty for downtown Cedar Falls, even after COVID is gone.
And not just for downtown, for.
Going to say. College Hill, yeah, that, thank you, Kelly. You were right on it. I was going to jump in there. Not just downtown. Any area though, any place all over the city, really, you know what I mean?
Any, any place that you could feasibly shut down a couple of blocks and still have the flow of traffic in that area function.
That gets pretty, it gets pretty tricky opening it up citywide. And then I get that we want to be fair with everyone, but focus maybe on College Hill and downtown to start with. But if you look at a Mulligan's, closing down State Street or something, I mean.
Yeah, I agree. That gets harder.
We don't have a police force to manage that much, but at least for those two main areas.
Yeah.
Something we can do.
I see what you're saying, Mark, about that. Maybe it's not closed down for someone like Mulligan's. Just keep in mind that be creative. But yeah.
Um, Director.
Well, many of these places already have outdoor patios.
Yeah. Can you comment, uh, on some of the discussions that have been going on with, uh, Community Main Street for downtown closures? Or is that still very much in the works?
Um, we've had conversations. This probably goes back around four to six weeks, I think. I know that that had come up. Um, Mayor, you had been involved in some of those conversations, um, in talking with Community Main Street. I know they reached out to the businesses to find out if that might be something that could be helpful. How would that work? Uh, what days might be of interest, that type of thing. So it was pretty well explored. In the end, it sounded like the feedback was a concern about the increased cost of having tables and chairs. Like Councilmember Miller was mentioning that, that cost was an issue. Um, would the streets end up being utilized or would it just look like a vacant area and a little bit of concern that way? And so in the end, um, I think the, the, um, the thought at this point was that it may not be of interest to enough people in order to make it worthwhile. I don't know if that's changed from those conversations. Um, like I said, four to six weeks ago, but that's kind of where it landed at that point. So you know who I think about when I think about, um, like that? I think about the businesses that can't adapt. Like, okay, I think about the bars that don't serve food. I think about the business that's on the corner of Second and Main Street. And how that is a long, narrow business. And I worry about how, even with the mask mandate, how you socially distance in that place because it's a very long, narrow building. And no matter what, if you go to the restroom or anything, you're kind of close to each other. So that was my thought when I thought about that. I mean, I know it's alcohol and we sometimes are scared about what, you know, opening up open container laws is, but we want those businesses, businesses to survive. And so that's who, who I kind of think about, um, when I think about closing down that area, which I don't know if necess, you know, tables or if people just mingle. I, I mean, I don't know. I just want to make sure we're doing whatever we can to help those businesses survive. And if having a little bit of outdoor space, so people can actually go there and patronize and, and follow those, um, rules of a possible mandate, uh, that it would work for them.
And I don't know, bar owners, I believe they can still sell alcohol to go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If there's a way, you know, I think I've mentioned it a couple of times. I was in Galena a couple of months ago and they had already put it in place. They jumped on it and it was, I had a fantastic time. People were up and down.
On, uh, like, uh, tables, like.
Restaurants had their own individual tables or they opened up a specific area. Everybody was doing the mask thing. They allowed open container on Main Street. They had a couple of police officers walk in the beat every night. And you could go from bar to bar and it gets awful tricky. I'm sure when you get down to the laws, I'm looking at Kevin here, but at the same time. For, maybe that's a way that you can help some of these bars downtown is.
Right.
They can have like alcohol to go. I mean, they're doing it now and we got to get creative in it. And I, I think it shows them as well that to some of these folks that don't want this mask mandate in place. We're trying to be creative and we're trying to help everybody and in whatever way that we can. There's all, and you know, just with changing an ordinance in a typical three readings, we're already heading into fall. So we got to get super creative if we're going to do something yet this year. But as well, if there's a desire for it, maybe that works in the spring too, if we're still sitting in the same boat. I mean.
We could, Mark, um, if, if it's something that change in ordinance that we, uh, we all are in support of and is going to help the businesses, there's always the, we could always suspend the rules with six votes and change it. So it might not necessarily take six weeks if it's something that we all, you know, so there's a possibility there.
Yep.
Is there a way beyond, uh, Community Main Street, maybe they've already done it to survey the business owners regarding how many would participate or is there, uh, there's going to be some people that are anti this idea and.
Yeah, I think with any decision that's hot button downtown, you get mixed views on it. I think one of the things in talking with Kim, she's, people are concerned about losing fifty parking spots on Main Street. I, I get it, but if this is survival of a business downtown, then do, do we not go over the solvency of our businesses over the parking thing? I mean.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just thinking that if there's some creative thinking among that group, uh, we should, uh, get them involved in the discussion. So.
Absolutely. I mean, it, and to Stephanie's point, maybe there, there isn't enough interest. I mean, I think that kind of depends on if the city can find some money to help them out with buying tables and all that, because they're already at a point where they're not bringing in the money that normally do. So if we were to come up with a pot of money to try and help there with the standard table that works. You know, and each business gets ten tables or five tables or whatever. I mean, we can figure all that out later if there's a desire to do it, but we've been sitting here in this long enough. I feel like if we can make a move here, let's try and do something for them.
Okay. Well, yeah, we're at, at six o'clock now. So, uh, to respect your time, uh, it sounds like we have a consensus to move forward with preparing uh, the, uh, the man of the, the resolution that, uh, wouldn't have an enforcement mechanism. But still would be a requirement for masks to be worn in Cedar Falls. That would be voted on, um, in the, the, uh, September eighth meeting. And then also we need to move forward on, uh, with consensus, unless, unless there's objection, uh, move forward on uh, some sort of support, additional support for businesses and, and, uh, Main Street and potentially College Hill. Whether it's a grant or, or some sort of economic assistance in order to adjust to these times. Does that sound about right?
I consent to both.
What about the, is a educational piece within the ordinance or is there some unique educational things we need to be doing?
I, I don't know if that needs to be included in the resolution as an, like an official thing. We certainly, there are things we could do that since it doesn't require a resolution. I, I might suggest that we not put it in the resolution. So it's one less thing to have to approve. But that should be a component that we move forward on.
Yeah.
I agree. Maybe a commercial on, you know, I think it would be good to have a commercial. It, something like that.
Like a PSA?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Keep Cedar Valley, you know, open. That's what it could be. I don't think we need to use the word safe either because it's really about keeping it open. It's keeping, keeping us going. Let's keep Cedar Valley open, you know? Anyway, I'll leave that. Yeah. I mean, safe is, is a good word too, but.
Thank you.
It really is about like, we want, we all want to, none of us want to lose any of our businesses and we don't want to lose the people we love. I mean, we've got to figure out a way to work together. And this, the, the PSA thing, I feel like it's also important maybe to, um, I mean, I'm not sure who would speak, but I mean, maybe if some of us wanted to speak, but also if we could maybe think about possibly reaching out to some of our local experts and, um, give it some thought there.
Yep. So three things to move forward with.
All right. That's a consensus.
Okay. I got a question then, Mr. Mayor. Can you break down the, uh, cities that these cases are taking place in maybe over the last week or so and get that by midweek?
Yeah, I can, I can send that by email and also I'll find a way to post it. So public has that too.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right. And you, when did you say that for? Like the last week, Darryl?
Well, easy to find the last week or two weeks. If the data is there, I'm assuming you just go into some database and pull it out probably.
Okay.
I'm guessing. If, if not, find out and then go forward for the next week or two as we go.
All right.
And post it on your, on your blog. Thank you.
It's a great idea.
Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order tonight? All right. We will, uh, look forward to seeing you on, uh, Monday, no Tuesday. So council meeting is Tuesday, the, uh, day after Labor Day. We'll see you then.
Thank you.